All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education accepts the corrective action plan 2017 as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Coles. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves the 2016-17 financial statements as detailed in the previous -- no, it was in this Friday mailing. Right? Yes, detailed in the Friday mailing.
You think that's Friday?
Yes, in this Friday, yeah, right. So the Board of Education approves the 2016-17 financial statements as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Are there any questions or comments that we have already asked? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves contracts for two students attending private residential schools for the 2017-18 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. One student attending the Lowell School at a cost of $36,385, one student at Lavelle School for the blind at a cost of $74,142. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Edu-- oh, wait. Hold on a second. As Board President, I am calling for the consideration of business items in tonight's agenda as consent items. This includes business items five through fifteen, which covers special education service providers and a whole bunch of obsolete items. Are there any items members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion and a separate vote? Okay. Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda including business items five through fifteen? Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so that motion carries. Now I need a motion to approve like that. Move the agenda items as part of the consent agenda. How do you think so? Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Very good. Board of Education approves the updated use of facilities report for July 2017 through June 2018 as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Seconded by Mrs. Coles. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves the BEA charges for the 2017-18 school year. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Coles. Are there any questions or comments?
No, not so.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves the BEA roster for the 2017-18 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Coles. Are there any questions or comments?
Why do you do this? Why are they putting a roster? I don't know why I'm doing this. It's the BEA bylaws, so it should be the roster.
Yeah, it's in their bylaws.
If it's amended, will we have to approve it? If they add people to it, will we have to approve that as well, or no? Just asking.
Yeah, I mean, I was just gonna-- yeah, I mean, just because we're approving the roster does not mean more people can join. More people left, what happened?
We want more people. We need more people.
More people, yes.
Okay.
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 All right, all those in favor? Aye. Board of Education recertifies the school-based planning and decision-making plan for 2017 as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a couple. Go ahead, Marjorie.
My question just is, is this-- have there been any substantive changes made?
None.
I was just going to inquire about, so you have the school-wide site-based committees, and then, as I was reading through this, there's a district component, like with, like a board leader is on, and are we-- we're not doing that anymore?
No, it's a plan that was-- I mean, this was done, like stated in the--
Yeah, I know.
And the plan needs to be updated. So Mr. Maniello is actually gonna convene a committee, hopefully this year, to update the plan.
Okay. Just 'cause that, as I was reading through it, there were things, I was like, um, to my knowledge, we're not doing this, that, with her, the fourth and the fifth, so I was just curious.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all those in--
Oh, one more. Do we have records of what the schools do in terms of their site-based committees? Like, is there, like, something they need to submit to the district?
There's nothing they need to submit. They do have their committees, but there's nothing that gets submitted.
So we don't really know what schools are doing on their side? Okay. Just curious.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Board of Education has a second reading and adoption of the following policies. Policy 5405, student wellness. Policy 9140.1, staff complaints and grievances. The policy 9260, conditional appointment, student safety. So move. Moved by Mr. Press. No one else would. I'm trying to move it along. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Do we have any questions or comments?
I have a question. That is, are the-- I see they're all required policies. I'm assuming these are pretty much either boilerplate or restatement of old policies. There's not significant-- if this is a required thing, for the most part, we run our policies through council and the school boards association, so I'm assuming there's nothing in here that is either unique to Baldwin or new from the last time.
Correct. And they're run through council, they're run through school boards, and they're also run locally across district administration.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education approves the following special assignment of board members for-- of a board member? For the 2017-18 school year, the Baldwin Foundation for Education Liaison, which this is a new position, or new liaison position. So, anyone want to speak to this volunteer for a question?
We were talking about, um--
Oh. I was just gonna say, weren't you and Mrs. O'Hagan talking about--
Is it possible, myself, well, I'm volunteering Mrs. O'Hagan and asking this, but to call liaison and do this, I am interested in being a liaison, but I feel that I need some form of understanding, at least for a first few meetings, since I've never attended them before, just to get a feel of the expectations and so forth. I don't know if that makes sense to you, or do you think it's the best way?
It's absolutely fine with me. I'm wondering if, because in our other list of liaisons, we have a single person and a sub, or an alternate, I'm sorry, an alternate. So maybe for form's sake, we should put one name and an alternate, and then you and I can switch it off. I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to have you do it, so we can, if you wanna have your name first and mine second, that's fine.
Okay. So then why don't we do that? I'll be-- I'm interested in being the liaison.
Okay.
Say it again? I don't have a duty. I don't have a-- I'm not a liaison for anything.
How did that happen?
It happens.
Okay. All right, any other conversation about that? All right, so--
Unless Ms. Coles wants to--
Okay. So our Baldwin Foundation for Education Liaison will be Mrs. Dreska, and we will have an alternate--
Baltimore.
--named Mrs. O'Hagan.
Okay.
Can I get a motion? Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Coles. All those in favor? Aye. All right. We are at the other portion. We have a--
No, you missed the district safety plan.
Okay. Oh, we just--
I thought we just--
Yeah, I was--
You said it.
We discussed it. We had the hearing, now we're adopting--
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
All right, Board of Education approves the district-wide safety plan as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Mrs. Coles?
So, if I could just ask, is there-- I did not see anything in reading over the district-wide safety plan that would be any kind of a preventative measure. And by that I mean, do we promote campaigns through the schools? If you see something, say something? You know, if, I mean, I know there was an instance, one time a few years back, of a student making comments online about killing themselves, but do, are we educating the kids and trying to take preemptive measures before some of these disasters could occur?
I would say all the time.
Okay. So there are specific campaigns?
I don't think I would call it a campaign, but I feel pretty confident in our staff knowing what's happening. I'm extremely confident in our students. Our students, we are very comfortable coming to adults in our community to tell them the things that they know are present.
I'm just guessing, but I would think it may or may not be spelled out here, but it's probably in code conduct, probably part of health curriculum, you know, it probably is embedded in other things, I'm guessing.
And the safety plan is very templaty, according to the requirements of New York State.
Yeah, because a lot of it is confidential.
Right, right. I've just been to different things and heard people speak about things like the safety plans, and, you know, they do talk about also preventative--
So I think the safety plan is our measures and procedures where the things you're talking about are more programmed, and that is embedded in our curriculum.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, now we're at another. And we have one item that's listed there. Is this, this is your item?
Sure. I asked if we could put this on the agenda because I believe at the organization meeting, Mrs. Dreska asked about the possibility, or mentioned that she was interested, and then I kind of said, yeah, I'm kind of interested in joining the New York State Black Caucus. And so I wanted to kind of bring a conversation back to kind of, because we, I think the question was asked, if we were to join, or as individuals, who, how would that, what would that look like? What would we need in terms of, you know, do we need information for the board to kind of have a conversation in terms of their bylaws, their fee schedule, a whole host of things? So I just kind of, given that they're meeting this week at the convention, I thought I was, we would try to attend the meeting and kind of get a, I understand what they do and, and maybe, you know, come back with a report. If there's anything else that the board would like for us to present, so that we can have a more meaningful conversation as to moving forward, if we wanted to do this or not. And that's why I brought it back, because we hadn't come back to it from the organization meeting.
Okay.
If I can make a suggestion, if you attend that meeting, would you please perhaps give a report to the rest of the board as far as, you know, the group is concerned, but specifically, if you would get a copy of their treasurer's report from last year, a copy of their bylaws, and any mission statement? You know, in order for us to have any kind of meaningful conversation, I think we need to know what their mission is, you know, what their bylaws are, and, and a treasurer's report.
Okay, and also, I think the open question, and this we can discuss further, is, should either myself and/or Mrs. Reed choose, so decide that we want to become members of the Black Caucus as individuals, rather than seeing it as a district membership? Is that an option? Because this may not have been presented in the past, so what are the ramifications for the districts who support, are interested in being members? Should we choose to do so in terms of paying for the membership?
I was just gonna say, that becomes, that becomes the question. That becomes the question. If the district is going to pay for a membership for an individual board member, I think we have to look into what the regulations are about that.
Okay. Okay, so we'll do that, so treasurer's report, bylaws, mission statement.
Yeah.
Is there anything else from anyone else?
I think that, you know, from my perspective, I think, you know, and I think that information would bring this to us, but understanding that the mission or the goals and the, I guess if the mission of the organization is in line with our mission and goals as a board. So, and I think we'll get that information from there, and if you gather any other information during the meeting, that can help us understand that, that would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, the other organizations we belong to, like the National School Boards Association, the state school boards association, REFIT, all their goals are in alignment. So that's what we need to look at. We need to look at the mission and goals to make sure that it's in alignment and not in contradiction with other, you know, with things that we believe in or other groups that we belong to. So that's--
Okay, so we'll start that. We'll start with that question, and then we have to table it for another meeting, once you have that information.
Okay.
I'm good, okay. Thank you.
Great, okay. Does anyone else have anything under, out there?
I just wanted to mention one thing that we haven't spoken about at this board table, and that is the Constitutional Convention that is going to be on the ballot in November. And I don't know how much you've seen, except for some advertisements on television. But there was a survey done, which was a little disconcerting, public, a survey of the public, and do you approve of or disapprove of the idea of a Constitutional Convention? And the public response was positive. Question number two was, do you know what a Constitutional Convention is? And the answer overwhelmingly was no. So I think all of us in the organizations we belong to have been involved in conversations about this, and the consensus, certainly among people in education, is that it is not a good idea for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is that many of the changes that are being suggested by proponents are things that could be changed through the legislative process as it exists now. You don't have to have a convention to make certain changes. And the concern is that the delegates to a Constitutional Convention would be special interests and very many of the same players who are currently involved in state government, so that it would not truly accomplish the goals that have been put forth by those who would like to see a convention. So I guess all I'm saying is that if you have any intention of voting on that issue in November, I just strongly suggest that you investigate the implications of a Constitutional Convention, not the least of which is the cost, which I've seen estimated as high as a hundred million dollars. So, what did you say?
If I could, Mrs. Coles?
If I could just piggyback on that, because it is a confusing issue, and, you know, what do we do with everything these days? We Google. So, you know, of course, when I wanted more clear answers about this, you know, you just Google what is a Constitutional Convention? And I believe it was either the first or the second article that came up. It's about seven pages long, but it's excellent because it gives both points of view very clearly, you know, so it's not geared in one direction or the other. It gives all the pros and cons. It's extremely clear and very informational, and I would suggest everybody take a look at that.
Okay, all right. So before we move into our second comment period, important dates coming up. The New York State School Boards Convention, it's on the list, if anyone is interested in going, that starts tomorrow. The Legislative Forum, as Mr. White mentioned earlier, is Wednesday, October 18th, at eight o'clock at the high school. We will have a community input meeting Wednesday after that, Wednesday, October 25th, at eight PM, also at the high school. Intramural night is coming up, Saturday, November 4th, 7:50 PM at the high school. Daylight savings time, all back. Yes, okay, Sunday, November 5th. Superintendent's Conference Day. Schools are closed for students on Tuesday, November 7th. That is also, is that election day, right? Yes. Our next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, November 8th, at eight o'clock at Steel School. And schools are closed on Friday, November 10th. All right, so we're gonna open up comment period two. This comment period is not limited as to subject matter, the same rules apply as they did from the first comment period. Each speaker gets three, up to three minutes. The period itself is limited to a total of thirty minutes. Address your questions to me, give us your name and address. We do not discuss individual students or individual staff members, and I think that's it. So I will open the mic.
Good evening. Name and address?
Yes, please.
Trudy McKinley, 119 New York Avenue, report. Just an observation, on Saturday, when I was going into the Dollar Tree parking lot, I understand that was homecoming, but our students were all over the parking lot, and one, few of them were, seemed like they were chasing each other, but they darted out into, in front of my truck. So I'm not sure what, the kids were gonna be kids, but we wanna be able to at least address the behavior outside of the school, after-school events, in addition to open campus. I know that Baldwin is a open campus for lunch, so there must be something that we can do to encourage and promote safety when they are outside of school grounds during school hours. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
First Wilder, 655 St. Luke's Place. I just wanna make the board aware, and the community aware, that I attended a funeral a couple of weeks ago, and it was of a Rockwell Center family. And what was so nice for me to see is that one of our small ensembles from Baldwin was asked to sing at the funeral ceremony. And it was nice because they chose Baldwin students over Rockwell Center students, and sitting there, I was so proud to say that I was from Baldwin, and they represented us very well. So I just thought you should be aware that they are out and about in places that none of us really even know, unless we run into them. So it was nice to see that, and I thought you should know.
Thank you. I've actually, myself, well, because my daughter's involved in these people's, been at funerals and seen them perform, and it's really incredible watching. I mean, they traveled, I went to a funeral in Brooklyn, where these kids went to Brooklyn and to Menhasset to support their own, these were family members of students. And just, and bringing tears to people's eyes with what they sang.
Robert Philgulmas, 979 Anthony Iron Street. Baldwin is a very low-performing suburban school district. There are fifty-four school districts in Nassau County, and I can only come up with, I always thought we were in the bottom quartile, but I'm realizing now that we're definitely in the bottom quintile, and maybe even lower. I can only come up with seven other school districts where our students are, our students are outperforming. North to south, that would be Glencoe, Westbury, Hempstead, Roosevelt, Uniondale, Freeport, and Lawrence. So when I'm done, if you can come up with a few other suggestions, I mean, compared to the bedlam of New York City, we might look good, but we're a very ordinary school district, and they're always pulling out, oh, we sent the kids to Harvard as proof positive that all our kids are ready for Harvard, potentially ready for Harvard. And that would be like saying, one of our basketball superstars means that all our students could be basketball superstars. All over the country, they're producing great students who go to their state universities, Colorado, Utah. I'll take the kids in Utah over the kids in this school district, and their education, or Minnesota, except they're doing it at a third the cost, half the cost of what we're doing here. We're up to twenty-eight thousand dollars per student. That's expensive mediocrity. Baldwin School District, Gran Valero, our gasoline would be eight dollars a gallon. And our gasoline is no better in Baldwin than it is in New Orleans. And our Applebee's, our Best Bars are no different. And they've got great schools all over the country, and students who are learning, and students who are getting the, they have robotic programs in Afghanistan. You're not doing anything special here. You're just doing it very extensively, because you're really, it's the education mob. You're the education mob. You just take money, you take money, you take money, and you just pass it along to our educators. We got, and in 2010, you run these, you run these false budgets, you run up these massive budgets for our, and the representatives from the union noticed, matter of fact, they were out there campaigning for one of our board members last May. All the teachers were out there campaigning for the board member, another teacher, who signed their last contract, and I'm sure she's withholding to them now. And that's what's going on here. Our students, our schools, we got a hundred-year-old school, we got a hodgepodge high school. You put your money into salaries and benefits for your colleagues. It's self-dealing. And it's legal, but it's, you're really betraying your neighbors and New York State.
Thank you, Mr. Philgulmas.
I haven't heard anybody tell me another school district that you're outperforming. I only got seven out of fifty-four. You're number eight. Can you come up with one? That's my question, Mr. Press. Can you come up with another school district? No, seven?
All right, fine.
Well, good evening.
Hold on, I'm sorry, one second. We just, we had a board member that wanted to--
Second. If I could, I would just like to say that the views expressed there are not the views of this board for our youngsters sitting in this audience. We want you to know that you are special, you are unique, we know that, and we are always behind you a hundred and ten percent.
Absolutely. And yeah, just to clarify that, you know, we, there are some comments that come from certain members of the audience that we've been used to hearing for years and years, and so we, I guess we've just kind of become accustomed to it and not, chosen not to respond, but in no way, I mean, I think you can tell based on what we've said in our own comments from the activities we've attended, that we do, we disagree with the statements that were made, so. But thank you, Mrs. Coles. Go ahead.
All right, well, thank you. Almost in direct response to that, we are here because we wish to present an idea that we wish, that we think could both diversify and exemplify Baldwin High School in a better way. We wish to create a student government. And Samuel Salazar has really spearheaded that, and we have a lot of great ideas, and we wanna come here to connect to the board and the Baldwin community and find a way to make that. So he's gonna present some of that right now, and we're all gonna speak a little bit.
Hi. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sam Salazar. I'm a senior. I'm taking a lot of hard courses, I'm in many leadership positions, and I'm currently an intern at Senator Todd Kaminsky's office. So I give many thanks to the Baldwin School District for helping me get on that right path. In addition to my success, Baldwin High School is a great school. Yes, there are flaws, no place is perfect. Yes, there are flaws, no place is perfect, but one of the many things that I've noticed lack of is a student government. And with a student government, we find that it better helps the community, because not only are students taking an active role in helping the school, because we wanna help you guys succeed, because your success is our success, and our success is your success. So, we are on the same boat as you are together. So, recently, I've proposed many ideas, and they've all been deflected in a sense, so right now, I'm going to the top of this chain of command, and I just want to get, you know, get some input from the board and the, get some of the momentum going from the board, because I've made plans, I've made diagrams, I've spent countless hours staying up until 2:00 in the morning, wasting homework hours and everything. I've met with the principal during my lunch period, and as I wanna point out, that some of the themes that Dr. Kami said earlier, supportive environment, collaborative teachers, ambitious instruction, and I really think that this idea will really put those three themes into really promoting what Baldwin really is about. And, you guys want to say anything?
I might. Kendra will say something.
Well, I just wanna say, in response to what Sam said about staying up till 2:00 A.M., when he first asked me to be involved in this project, I was like, yeah, great, sure, you know, this'll be fun. And then he sent me all the work he did. I was blown out of the water. It was like 50 pages of actual things. He wrote a constitution for a school government, he made diagrams, he made like attendance lists. It was, it's honestly amazing, and I hope you guys have the opportunity to see that. So, basically, we're here not only to present this, but like Sam said, to form some side, to form some sort of liaison, so that we can work together with this school to actually make this happen. Because if this happens, it's not only connecting the senior class, but possibly all of the classes in the high school, which is very important, as it's detrimental when one of the grades feels like there's a schism between the other. You should be able to create a connection between the students, so that they can see what they should be looking forward towards in the future. And, I mean, if it works out well in the high school, why couldn't it be something that kids in the middle school can experience and look forward to at a higher level in the high school? So, hopefully this will work out, and I'm gonna leave.
Hi, my name is Russell Creed. I live at Baldwin High School as well, I'm a twelfth grade here. I just wanted to add on to what Kendra and Sam said about how, basically how we construction student government, which would include all grades instead of maybe skewing it towards the twelfth grade senior class. Maybe we can include some sort of representative body that would include some sort of delegates from each grade, so we can have a wide range of perspectives on what each grade values, because, I mean, each grade has different priorities, like juniors and seniors are obviously more focused on college and college admission, how that's gonna work, while freshmen and sophomores are sort of more focused on getting to that point, and, you know, making sure they're getting involved in the community, having good grades, maybe driven in sports and stuff like that.
Hi, um, my name is Russell Johnson, also a senior at Baldwin High School. Adding on to what everybody else was saying, I, I think it would also be a great idea to have like, like, sort of like a council of students, representatives from each grade, that, you know, kinda like how the legislative branches in, in our, in our country, so that was, I was allowed to say real short. The other thing was about what makes Baldwin High School special, like our academies. I don't know of any other school district that has those academies that exposes our students to these, you know, other career options, like the Medical Academy, for example, who takes these students and literally brings them to a hospital and lets these students shadow other doctors and stuff like, seeing that is actually amazing. And I was, when I was doing this, I was in the Engineering Academy, and actually, I thought I wanted to be an engineer, but then doing that showed me that probably wasn't for me. I now realize I probably should've joined the Medical Academy, but, you know, that's okay, you know? But, um, yeah, thank you for all the work that you've done for us, and we hope that we can make this bridge, and so we can all work together, because like Kendra said, we are all in the same boat, and we will sink a boat together, I think, we'll both. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanna say, you know, we don't often get students that, that come, and for, and you guys were just, just incredibly articulate and well-spoken up there, and you got your point across incredibly well, which I know I, as an adult, have difficulty with, so, sometimes. So, it's very heartening to see our youth, our high schoolers, stand up in front of an audience, which is not easy to do, and to get your point across as well as you did, so thank you for that. I don't know, it's, you wanna, would you like to respond?
No, I was just gonna say that we, that it actually works very nicely, that we will, that we'll all be together this weekend for, the next couple of days for training, so there's an opportunity to have a conversation about, you know, what you've shared. You know, obviously, this, we don't promise things at this desk, but there is an opportunity. It's very heartening to hear students wanna develop a program and, and present it in a way that is as sophisticated as you have presented it, and I think it'll give us something to talk about, something else to talk about over the next couple of days.
So, I, I just want to make a point of clarification. Sam and I met a couple times. Our meetings were never about a student government at Baldwin High School. Our meetings were about a Nassau County government of students that was across 56 school districts. So, I don't ever want there to be a misunderstanding that you are bounced from person to person. That is not the case. I have some questions for all of you, though. Did you have a conversation at the high school about a high school student government? Okay, so tell me what, what, how that conversation went and where that was left off. That's fine.
So, I did have the conversation with the principal of the high school, and we worked everything out, and then for some reason, it didn't go out, because I had all the dates planned for, you know, elections, we were gonna, we were gonna do this great thing, but nothing really turned out, because no teacher would sponsor it, and yes, died really, really quickly.
Okay. So, you came back from the summer? Because you and I spoke and...
That is correct, yeah.
And you, you had your work cut out for you over the summer.
Yeah.
And, but, but that conversation was a different conversation.
That is correct.
So, my assumption then is somewhere along the way, there was, there was a more of a collaborative group, and that there was a decision made to try and do something less, more in our own control and, and kinda get it out of the hands where we really had no control at all.
Right.
Is that fair?
Yes.
And then, so you, so then, when was it presented to the high school with specific dates? Was that when you came back from school?
So, I presented it to the principal of the high school around mid-September. I emailed the principal of the high school the plan, even survey results I conducted last year resulting in this. I analyzed 750 individual surveys from students from the 2016 to 2017 school year, and over 74 percent of the students that took the survey said they wanted one. And I took that survey and I said, look, we have to do it, it's, it's really what the students want, and it's really gonna show this inclusion in, in our high school.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I can ask a question to confirm. This is no different than any other club where you needed an advisor, correct?
The answer is yes.
Okay. And did, can I ask a question? Did you have an advisor in mind? Have, so you talked about what you did in terms of the students, did you find an, a, yeah, yeah, it's okay, you can say from there. I'm just curious if you recruited an advisor as well?
So, basically, I talked to a consultant, consultant study teacher, there's a few teachers that I'm interested in. Unfortunately, I'll turn it down. Unfortunately, I probably have to find a partner, but, you know, I really feel like really, that, that's why.
Okay, so the, the gap is, one, a gap, is, is having an advisor in place amongst other things? But that, that's essential.
Right, I think we're, I think we're in an information sequence. Because I'm a big believer in there are three sides to every story.
Understood. Got it. Well, I commend you guys on your presentation. I know I try, try not to show emotions, but it was another proud moment just to see you all present yourself, and I appreciate you continuing to push the effort, because you all really want this, and I commend that, not giving up.
May I ask a question? Have we had student government at the high school at some point?
I think the senior, the senior class has officers.
Their class, there's a different structure.
Like a delegate?
There's a class officer.
So...
Actually, I've been running for senior class president for pretty much, I guess, since the end of the summer. We're, we're now getting it started. I'm voting for me in two weeks or so, on the 23rd, but that's only for the senior class. I was under the impression for a while that there was a private, you know, the president, vice president structure at every grade, but that has been dissolved, so that's only for the senior class. But, um, besides that point, with that, like, with that structure, only a few things get to participate in it, and really, so this would be like, just inclusive, and I think that's one of like my things, one of the reasons I was so interested in this, because I think it would be really amazing to see all these different minds from different grades and backgrounds and agents coming together. So, definitely, finding an advisor has been a struggle, you know, teachers, they all have their own lives outside of school, they have clubs, they are possibly already involved and extra helps to cater to, so that has been a...
Great, thank you.
I'm, I'm very kind of sorry.
You gotta be official.
You gotta get up.
You know how I am about being official. Okay, Event Ramsey, 865 Fenton Avenue, here at Baldwin. I just wanted to comment on the kids, because in today's society, our kids are not voting, they're not becoming involved in government, and these kids showing that much passion and interest needs to be commended, and if we can help them at all, I'd really like to see that happen. Also, I attended the Middle School Center tour this last Friday, and I have to say, I was very impressed with the library, that, you know, I spoke to the librarian, she said that the kids love it, and I can see why. The space is amazing. It's, it's got the technology, it's got the, the feel of warmth in there, and I'm looking forward to my son going in there, so thank you.
All right, seeing no one else pressing to the mic, I get a motion to adjourn. Move by Mrs. Reed, second by Mrs. Coles. All those in favor? Aye. All right, have a good night, everyone. Thank you.